Do I mean the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to just briefly introduce our deputy clerk, Ashida Hashim. This is her first meeting, so we'll give her a little grace and just give a wave if you need any help. Would you take the role, please?
Trustee Guyer?
Here.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Baumann?
Here.
Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Betzinger?
Here.
Trustee Marisack.
Great. President Brawley could not make it this evening, and Trustee Marisack was unable to attend this evening, but we do have quorum. First on the agenda is the public participation portion. Oh, boy. It's gonna be a long meeting, right? First up, we have the Oswego Fire District Chief, Chief John Cornish. Do you talk about the upcoming referendum? Chief, the floor is yours.
Hi. Thank you so much for letting us speak this evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is John Cornish. I'm the fire chief for the Oswego Fire Protection District. I know that you guys have a full night this evening. I appreciate you letting me come out and just say a few words about an upcoming referendum that we are looking, that we're seeking. So I would just like to read a prepared statement for you, just to get some information out there that will help everybody along and try to educate some folks in our community. And then I'll just kind of give you a couple of things that reinforce what we're saying. So, the Oswego Fire District is seeking a rescue tax increase of one-tenth of one percent, or point one-zero percent. The district is seeking this tax rate increase of one-tenth of one percent on the June 28, 2022 ballot in the general primary election. Early voting, I believe, starts on May 19. In March of this year, our Board of Trustees unanimously adopted an ordinance seeking voter approval for this new rescue tax to provide funds for the Oswego Fire Protection District. For those of you that don't know, the Oswego Fire Protection District covers more than 53 square miles that include all of Oswego, parts of Montgomery, parts of Plainfield, parts of Yorkville, parts of Will and Kendall Counties. And all the Oswego Fire Protection District protects more than 75,000 residents compared to the approximately 27,000 residents in 2002. The Board of Trustees has worked hard over the years to seek all avenues of funding before approving this ordinance and moving forward with the rescue tax on the ballot. The Oswego Fire Protection District recently engaged our community with a planning update as well as a survey that sought out what was important to our community. That was sent out to 20,000 homes. It was clear that replacing aging apparatus, replacing outdated and unreliable equipment, adding firefighter paramedic staff, as well as improving retention and recruitment were strongly supported when that was sent out, that survey. The information was analyzed by our staff at the Oswego Fire Protection District as well as our Board of Trustees, and it was determined in the best interest of our community to move forward with this referendum. This is hard because we all know, it's difficult for me to sit here and ask for a referendum to be passed in this time. It is absolutely hard to do. I'm a taxpayer in this area as well. But it's something that we struck to maintain the services that we provide today. It's something that we feel very strongly about to work towards getting passed. The driving forces for the rescue tax are many, but can be summarized by saying that it's been 20 years since the voters approved additional funding for the district. The need for additional monies to maintain the services we currently provide are necessary since the growth of our community, cost of apparatus and equipment and operating costs have outpaced the current funding. The Oswego Fire Protection District responded to more than 6,000 calls in 2021 compared to 2,000 calls in 2002. The growth continues significantly in our community, and the cost of apparatus and equipment in our community continue to rise. Just from 2008 to today, it was a 65.65% increase, 65% increase in call volume. The Oswego Fire Protection District prides itself on providing the best services possible to the people we serve, no matter what town that they're in. Whether it's responding to a severely injured child, or a tragic house fire, or a senior citizen that's having trouble breathing, we will always be there no matter what. Whether this passes or not, we will still show up every time. With costs continuing to rise, we are seeking these funds to ensure that we maintain the current services that we have. So just to reiterate, what we're asking for is a one-tenth of one percent rescue tax. Due to the significant rise in the call volume, we're not going to be able to, at some point here very shortly, we will not be able to provide the services that we provide today. Ambulance availability will continue to decrease and response times will increase. Our staff, all of our people, and our trustees, find this unacceptable in moving backwards. We are seeking the increased funding in the best interest of our community. And just to talk just a little bit about the community, like I said, we have 75,000-plus residents. We protect more than 20,000 homes, more than 1,100 commercial properties, 25-plus schools, preschools, daycares. I already discussed what we cover. Currently, our tax rate is point seven zero one four seven. Of the local comparables, the four other fire districts of the local comparables that provide similar services, we are the lowest. If this referendum is approved, it would move us to dead center. We would move up by two. Once again, the challenges that we're facing is the growing service population that we have. Since 2009, we've increased by 30,000 people. The response times are hugely important. Our current response times are about six minutes and 29 seconds on average. Fires can double in size every 60 seconds, and cardiac arrest survivability rates decrease by 15% every minute without medical care. When we talk about recruitment and future retention challenges, fewer and fewer recruits are applying each year. There's strong competition when recruiting for first responders, and there's an absolute national paramedic shortage. We are experiencing the same things that law enforcements are feeling right now when it comes to people applying. And for us to maintain the services, we prefer to attract those folks. We're going to be seeking this referendum. Just a couple more things. I know when we talk about the cost of things that have risen over the years, a cot, when I started at Oswego Fire Department, cost about $4,000. That same cot is $40,000 to $50,000 today. A cardiac monitor is three times the cost it was 15 years ago. It runs about $44,100. We have a cardiac monitor on all our ALS ambulances and all of our fire apparatus that are fully staffed, our advanced life support as well, full-time with paramedics. A breathing apparatus, that air tank that you see, is five times the cost that it was just 15 years ago, at $11,000 apiece. In case you're wondering exactly what this would really mean to a resident here, the one-tenth of one percent rescue tax has an estimated impact of about $99 per year on a house that's valued at $300,000. And just to recap, the use of the proceeds, if we can, are successful in our attempts to pass this referendum, are to add firefighter and paramedic staff to bring a fourth full-time ambulance into service, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, replace outdated equipment and aging apparatus, and attract and retain qualified responders. Some of the anticipated benefits would be improved response times, maintaining the emergency services that we have now, ensuring reliability of equipment and apparatus, improving safety of the first responders, strengthening recruitment of first responders, and reducing future turnover, and possibly improve the district's ISO rating to reduce insurance premiums. And I know I've taken up just a little bit more of your time, but the last thing I will say is that if anyone has any need for information or would like to educate themselves further, you can go to OswegoFire.com and seek out information. There's a PowerPoint information with all the data and details to support why we're seeking the referendum. There's also a frequently asked questions page there, which talks about quite a bit of the things that I just talked about, and the questions that are generated generally from folks in the community. There are answers provided there. You can also go to the FriendsOfOswegoFire.com website. If anybody has any questions, they can reach out to me personally at the fire station, Chief John Cornish, at the main station number one, and I will direct you in the right way to gather any information to help educate anyone in the community that wishes to know more about the upcoming referendum. So with that, I thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here this evening. The next portion of public participation, if there is anyone here who wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda, now is the time to come down to the microphone to speak. If you are here to speak about something that is on the agenda, specifically the trans lines, we're going to have public participation at that time when we cover that. Just looking around at who's here. So if you want to speak on that, we're going to have you wait until we get to that portion of the agenda. Okay? All right. Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. As part of the consent agenda, we have two proclamations. So I'm going to start with reading the proclamations, and then we will go through the rest of the consent agenda. So I'm starting with the proclamation of the National Public Works Week. That is May 15 through the 21st, 2022. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, these services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Village of Montgomery to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these programs, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and scale of the public works officials. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, on behalf of Matthew T. Brawley, village president of the Village of Montgomery, I do hereby proclaim May 15 through May 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the Village of Montgomery, and call upon the community to recognize the essential role and contributions the public works department makes every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. I'd also like to point out, we have several members of our public works department here, and we're all going to come down and have a photo. Yes? So I'm going to ask Director Wolf to come down as well. One more. One, two, three. There we go. Sure. Thank you. Our next proclamation is for Police Week, May 11 through the 17th of 2022. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and May 15 through May 21st as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the law enforcement agency of the Village of Montgomery play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the Village of Montgomery. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, it is important that all citizens of Montgomery observe Sunday, May 15, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Now therefore, on behalf of Matthew T. Brawley, village president of the Village of Montgomery, I call upon all citizens of Montgomery and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11 through the 17th, 2022, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I direct that the flag of the United States be displayed at half-staff on all village government buildings on May 15 in conformance with the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994. I'll ask Chief Smith to come up, please. As I said, those proclamations are part of the consent agenda. I will read through the rest of the consent agenda and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of April 25, 2022, executive session minutes of April 25, 2022, accounts payable through May 9 in the amount of $630,133.26, accounts receivable for April, water production report for April, building report for April, the two proclamations, excuse me, and the request for the liquor license Class J and waiver of the temporary liquor license fee for the Montgomery Foundation Street Eats Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Baumann. Madam Clerk, take the role, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes. Thank you. Next up, we have items for separate action. Ordinance 1966, reducing Class S liquor license.
Thank you. You previously created this liquor license for the distillery that was anticipated to go across the street. That is on hold, at least for now, and so at this time, we're requesting that you rescind that license, reduce it down to zero.
Are they still looking at other options at other properties?
They are, yes.
Okay.
All right.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Guyer, second by Baumann. Madam Clerk, take the role, please.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes. Next item is Resolution 2022-009, accepting a village utility easement at Montgomery Business Center for the Village of Montgomery. Director App. Yes, thank you. The Montgomery Business Center has a 12-inch water main that runs through east-west through the property. In order for the new development to take place, that water main does need to be relocated. So for a temporary basis, they are going to be relocating it so it runs north-south and meets up with Nell Road and Commerce, and will connect at that point. This needs to be in a public utility easement, so we have access to it and can maintain it. Eventually, this will go in the Nell Road right-of-way once Nell Road is built and connected, but at this time, this is a temporary solution to get the water main out of the way for the development to occur. So the village engineer has reviewed the plan, and we have it before you today for acceptance, so we can take it to be recorded. We are taking action on the streets. Okay. Any questions for?
I do. I just have a few. So this isn't running the entire length from Commerce to Nell Road, this water main?
Uh, no.
Okay. Because I was just wondering why we didn't secure the easement for Nell Road now, since we know where Nell Road's going to be, and just put us in that easement instead of doing a temporary?
So in order to construct Nell Road, there has to be embankment material placed and grading done on the lots on either side, north and south. If the main went in now, it would be too deep in the future. So the developer didn't want to install the embankment for the area now, hence the fact that they're doing a temporary easement until such time as they get ready to build the road.
Okay. The developer's paying the cost for this, then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Moved by Guyer, second by Youngerman. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes. Okay. The agenda, the next two items are related, and as I mentioned, we are going to have the public portion, but we'd like to have some introductory remarks first, starting with Director App. Yes.
Yes. So we have trans lines before you, the petitioner. They're proposing to build a small warehouse and distribution facility on the 15-acre parcel that's located at the end of Rochester Drive. The proposed facility includes utilizing a portion of the property for storage of semi-tractor trucks and trailers. Therefore, special use for outdoor storage is required in the M1 district. The new building is also going to require several variations from the following sections of our UDO. Section 8.2OB2, which is our building facade materials requirement. The proposed building is going to be primarily constructed of metal wall panels. We do have a restriction that says that metal wall panels, along with some other materials, are limited to a maximum of 25% of a building facade. In this case, for two of the walls, it will be 100% of the facade, so that would be on the western and southern portions. On the northern and eastern portions, there will be about 10-foot masonry along the base, 10 feet high of masonry along the base, and the remainder will be the metal wall panels. And that's primarily around their office area and the areas that face the street, Rochester Drive, as well as the residences to the east. They also requiring a variance from our parking design standards, specifically rated to parking space size for semi-tractor trailers. We require them to be 12 feet by 60 feet. This is the second variance you've seen for this regulation. So again, they are requesting for that width to be reduced down to 10 feet and allow for the parking spaces to be as small as 25 feet for certain spaces, and that's where they will be parking just the cabs for the trailers, and then the other spaces that are for the trailers to only be 55 feet deep. So they're requesting a variance for that as well. The last variance that they are requesting is from our screening requirements for outdoor storage. So they are requesting to have no screening requirements on the west and southern property lines. So that would be facing Yellow Freight to the west, and then you've got the railroad to the south. They would be providing the required landscaping along the eastern property that is adjacent to the residences. And then, as part of the public hearing process, they have increased the landscaping along that northern side of the outdoor storage area to provide the landscaping and screening on that side as well, to help some of the residents more towards the north, to have that screening from the outdoor storage area. The Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing on April 7, as well as on May 5. At the first public hearing, we went through the special use for outdoor storage, and after hearing, several residents from the adjacent subdivision expressed concerns about the potential for drainage and flooding issues, well contamination, light spillage, and noise. The commission determined it needed additional information before it could make any findings, and so they tabled action on that particular item and continued the public hearing on the variances to May 5. So based on the commissioner's requests and responding to the residents' concerns, the petitioner did update their plans. They increased the height of the berm along the eastern property line and wrapped it around the north end of the outdoor storage area to better screen the truck parking from the residents to the north. They removed most of the landscaping along the access drive and then added landscaping to the berm along the north side of the storage area, again, to help better screen. On May 5, they conducted the public hearing. Residents attended that meeting as well and continued to express concerns about well contamination and trucks leaking fluids which would leach into their groundwater and wells, and they continued to request that the berm be taller or a sound wall be placed, and were not in favor of any variation relief being provided for this development. After reviewing the revisions to the plan and listening to the changes that were made, as well as Engineer Wallers explaining the drainage situation out there, and reviewing the findings of fact, the commission did recommend approval of both the special use and the variations with a vote of 5-0 with the following conditions. We had semi-trailer parking spaces must not be smaller than the 10 feet wide or the 25 feet long, that the trailer tractor parking along the western property line must be set back at least 21 feet from that property line, village engineer approval of final engineering prior to building permit approval, installation, or sorry, staff approval of the landscape plan prior to building permit approval, installation of the cul-de-sac for Rochester Drive and the dedication of that remaining right-of-way, the granting of a stormwater easement to the village for the existing stormwater detention facility that's located on the property. Birmingham landscaping around the outdoor storage area must generally match what is shown on the site plan and landscape plans dated last revised for 2222, and those were the plans that were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That the evergreen trees planted on the berm must be a minimum of seven and a half feet tall. And that, finally, additional landscaping must be provided along the north side of the outdoor storage area between the end of the berm and the customer-employee parking lot so that it meets the outdoor storage and landscape screening requirements. So that's kind of an update on where we were. We did get the positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The petitioners are here to answer any questions that you might have, and Engineer Wallers are here to answer any questions you might have as well.
Engineer Wallers, do you have any further comment on the drainage issue that was brought up by the residents?
As Director App mentioned, at the Plan Commission, we did make a presentation to review some of the history of the drainage of the area. It started right around 2002 when Yellow Freight Project went in. We had a special use that was granted there that required the investigation of an outfall storm sewer, and we were unable to get the outfall storm sewer. However, the detention basin was designed compliant to the King County Storm Ordinance as a zero-release basin, so it was fully compliant at the time. And then this project actually started, the creation of Lot 4 was sometime, you know, several years ago. In order to create Lot 4, they provided another seven, approximately seven and a half acre feet of storage, again, zero-release basin. So that's in place already. So this lot was buildable for whatever would be permitted by the village. The one new addition is that for some time, we've been trying to install an outfall storm sewer. The township did upgrade the storm sewer that outlets from the subdivision, and as a result, we were able to make a connection, or will be able to make a connection to it. You may recall, the other piece of the puzzle was that we didn't have funding for the outfall storm sewer, and because of developer contributions within the watershed, we do have the funds to construct the sewer. So now we have the funding. The storm sewer's been designed, and the last thing that we needed was an easement to be able to install it. That storm sewer will help reduce the standing water that is out in the basin, and it will be controlled by a valve. We believe that it'll be a combination effort with the township and our public works department to control the valve, but that should eliminate one of the concerns that the residents had there, which was the standing water in the basin.
Okay. Thank you. Any other trustees have questions at this point for Director App or Engineer Wallers?
I do, please. Now that we have the funding available, and as I understand the background of this, there were some issues in getting the easement, or the property owner allowing for the easement?
So we had two property owners that we had to get easements from. One was a resident in the countryside. One was a resident in the countryside, or excuse me, the Johnson, Linnenhud subdivision. That person did grant the easement through his property. What we were having difficult getting through the frock estate was the easement onto the detention area property.
Okay. The stormwater runoff from Yellow and from this location are going to go into those detention basins, correct?
Correct.
And they're going to, they're going to be controlled by a valve as far as the flow? The, so is it really all of the stormwater runoff from both Yellow and this location? There's no water that should be shedding onto adjacent properties? It should all be going to this detention basin?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, I don't remember the exact amount, but it's over, it's like 216 acres of drainage that comes through the frock, you know, the former frock farm. We did also preserve 23 acre feet of depressional storage on the site, and then added an additional, in the first project, I think it was 33 acre feet. We noted at the Plan Commission that the elevation, the high water levels did not change. You know, the modeling that was done basically proved that the, you know, with, with, the with project was the same elevations as the without project.
Can I ask a question about a landscape question to? Well, I guess it's a question for the petitioner.
Okay, so, we'll wait a second.
Okay.
So, we will have, should we have the petitioner come next, and then? Why don't we have the folks that want to make public comment come next? And then, we will have the petitioner, who hopefully will be able to address anything that might come up. So, if there is a member of the audience here that would like to address the board regarding this particular item, I will ask you to come down. You would need to sign in, and then state your name for us. Anyone?
Are we continuing with questions, too?
Just wait one second. Okay, so, we don't have anyone from the audience that wants to come down? Okay, yeah, Trustee Bowman, go ahead.
Well, you were still.
Of course, yes.
My, my, my question for the petitioner, I guess for, my background, I have a horticulture background. And are you guys petitioners? Okay. I understand the adjacent properties concern about the light and also the noise. I have a Bachelor of Science in Horticulture. I understand your berming, I think the berm is nine feet. What I ask in the landscape design is that along that east berm, and turning a little bit to the north, if you're doing evergreen trees, that they not be some form of pine. Because pine trees, as they get older, Austrian pine and white pine, as they get bigger, they grow quickly, but they naturally limb themselves up. So, that doesn't do anything as far as the visibility, and it doesn't do anything as far as the sound. If you do some sort of evergreen tree, like Norway spruce, blue spruce, those sorts of things, they stay very solid throughout their life. They, they grow very well together, they look nice, but they also serve, you can't see through them, and they also will serve somewhat as a sound barrier. In reading this, going through this, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the original sized trees were five foot? And we, we talked about going to seven foot? Is that?
The minimum tree height for evergreens required per our code is a six-foot tree. So, that was what was originally proposed. As they provided their kind of sightline detail, it showed that sightline coming up, meeting the truck. And it showed that, in order for that to be fully screened, they would need to provide a minimum 7 and 1/2 foot tall tree.
I'm going to ask that they be between eight and 10 feet, and just kind of staggering. I know what the cost is of a spruce tree between a seven or an eight foot and a 10 foot. It's not that big of a deal. I'm okay with the, the way that you've got them spaced.
That's per our code.
And that, that's fine. I mean, if they want to stagger them a little bit, that's fine, too. I don't care. But, it, I'm, I'm looking at either eight to 10 foot. And they all don't have to be 10 foot. Throw in, because I don't want to, as a horticulturist, they don't, I don't want to see them all consistent. I want various sizes. And, I'm going to call out Ed Faff, our, our village forester, or village arborist. Do you, as, as I'm going through this and talking about this, what other evergreens would you feel that are really the best suited?
Right, I think Con Color Fur would be good.
That'd work, too, yep.
Steve, repeat it, so it can be heard.
Con Color Fur, which is an evergreen, but it doesn't have the same growth habit as a white pine, where it naturally limbs itself up. So, and just give us some variation in there, and height variation and that sort of thing. But white pine, Austrian pine, pines, no.
And I was just going to ask the petitioner to come forth, because at Plan Commission last week, they had to talk a little bit about this.
Sure, so I'm John Swark, I'm with DDCA Architects, Crystal Lake, Illinois. Have no issues with what you're talking about. From our first landscape plan to the current, there's two different plans in your packet today, I saw. The most current, I took it upon myself, instead of having one straight row of pines, we do kind of serpentine them across the top of the berm. And then, we alternate the hedges on east and west side also. And I know, and part of the comments today was the height of the berm, to work with the village staff on that. We might put a 2:1 slope on one side, keep the 3:1. We'll raise the berm if we can. I mean, it's, it's not an issue. We'd love to get rid of more dirt, so that's a good spot to put it. So, the height of it, we will get it as high as possible to meet village standards. And as far as the noise, not meaning to clear this board, because they presented it to the P&amp;Z, there's no backup alarms on these trucks. So, that's obviously a big nuisance for noise. And lighting, if you look at my cross-section, the light has zero-foot candles at the edge of the parking area of the trucks, which is at the west side of the berm. So, to get any type of foot candles to go over that berm is really impossible. The major lighting that they have in their yard now is from the Yellow Freight, which I believe the village is going to take a look at that.
I understand the situation.
They're, yeah, they're very tilted and very bright, so. And, so I'm the architect. Michael Roth is the attorney for the petitioner. And the petitioner Drew is also here, if you have any more questions.
I'm going to ask you to stay right there for us while, and then, further questions come up, and then you can switch out if you need to.
If, if you do a 2:1 or a 3:1 slope on that berm, are you, are you worried about mowing and mowability?
That would be the, the reason to be worried about it, correct?
What if you did, and Ed, I'm going to ask you the same question. What if you did a no-mow? Like a no-mow seed? Will that work with the existing evergreens?
Their existing evergreens are gone.
No, with the existing evergreens in the plan.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry.
That's a question for him.
Sure.
I'm going to take full advantage, because you're here, Ed. What's that?
I said I haven't seen the plan.
Right now, it's little green dots.
Yeah.
We're putting it on the spot.
But I, but I would say probably.
Okay, because that solves your mowing problem.
Correct, as long as that's okay with staff. And part of the recommendation or the condition today is final, or final landscape plan with staff approvals.
Any further questions, Steve?
Those are my questions.
Trustee Bowman?
What are the operating hours and days going to be? Is this 24/7, or is this primarily work day?
Evening, everyone. My name is Drew, I'm the president and owner of Trans Lines. So, the operating hours for the facility itself would be just a regular office hours. It would be, we actually start at 7, 8, depending on staff. And the doors get shut at 5. As I explained in the previous meetings, we, obviously, being a transportation company, you know, you have trucks coming in and out at various times. But, based on what our operations are, these entrances after hours would be minimal. And, you know, no staff would be present, or no work would be done after, probably, I don't know, 5, 6 o'clock. We are considering having probably some sort of a security, just because of the type of the business and customers that we have. Because we transport some high-value loads, which is electronics. So, we probably would be looking to have, maybe not a guard check, but some, some sort of a security, probably, you know, patrol through the night. But, that's pretty much it.
But it's not dozens of trucks that are going to be coming through from 11 to 3 in the morning?
No, no, no. So, so the difference is, and I was trying to explain to all the residents also that was here, so, the Yellow Freight is, their business model is consolidating freight, which is basically, they have a lot of trucks going in and out, because they have to pick up, you know, portions of freight all over the place. So, we are over-the-road carriers. So, we basically get full loads, which we take over the road. So, we're not, you know, regional, we're not local. We run a little bit over 100 units. And, at any given point in time, we only have maybe five, six trucks sitting in our yard. All of them are over the road. So, the only way they come in is, let's say, if we pick up some freight from our customers, we bring it back to our yard, we drop off the trailer. At certain point, truck has to come over, you know, switch the trailers and go on a road. But, just with the hours of service, and, you know, as human beings, we all want to work it during the day. So, you know, during the night, most of our drivers is just taking their sleep time. Yeah, 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 well, the entrances is going to be like 15 to 20 a day. I don't know, 25 maybe, if, if, you know, on a, on a higher end. But that's through the data. These are the four local guys that we run.
Okay.
Would you, I was at Plan Commission, so I know some of this, but, so you could share with the entire board, too. Would you talk a little bit about what would happen if there's a truck coming in after those hours? Tell us what happens, then?
It's, if you seen on the plan, you know, there's, there's different positions of where we can park trailers. We would have to figure out where, let's say, we put the loaded ones. But as the plan goes, we, we have some parking on the south side. And on the east side, it's a double parking trailers, right? So, these trailers would be probably the ones that are getting used the least. Just, again, looking at the concerns, you know, from the residents, if we have only trailers parked there, there wouldn't be no trucks, no idling, no, absolutely no nothing. So, most of the loaded trailers will probably go to the south side, which is back to the railway. And, the entrance is on the west side, so the building actually blocks the truck that's coming in. So, you know, on, on an exit, I would assume the truck would have to probably, you know, go from, from the east side. But, other than that, you know, it would just enter from the west side, go to the south, you know, drop the trailer off, pick up another one and leave.
Okay. So, the, the idea is there, there shouldn't be any long periods of time where there is a tractor that's idling there?
No, this is not a truck stop, and, and, you know, again, if we do have a driver that has to do his restart, which is 34 hours, we usually just get them into a hotel. We provide company cars, you know, we don't want them to be sleeping in the truck for, you know, a day and a half, or, or just sitting down there. So, we usually book them a hotel, which most likely would be the, you know, in the village on Montgomery. And, you know, they just go down there, they run some errands with the car and stuff like that. Yeah, yeah, these, we specialize in dry, dry freight, so these are not reefers, not refrigerators. So, they don't have them humming, you know, all through the night.
Okay. Is there anything else that you wanted to add for the board to hear?
I don't know, we, we not really, like I was trying to explain to all the residents, you know, we not, we not, we're not a kind of carrier that's trying to come in and, you know, create all this noise and everything. That's why we're kind of diligently working with, with the village staff, you know, to make sure that we, you know, do everything by the code and provide a little bit more, you know, kind of trees and higher berms, just to kind of block everything off. And, and the way everything is going to be constructed, like I said, with the trailers, you know, the trucks are going to be parked on the, on a different side. The bobtails are sitting on the, on the north side, you know, and the trailers that are going to be probably used the most are going to be on the south side, just to minimize all the noise. Other than that, all the, all the units that we run, they are 2018 and up. Most of them are 2020, 2021. So, these trucks by itself, it's, you know, we, it's not 90/80s anymore, when you, you know, you have a leaking cab driving, and the guy trying to fix it himself, you know? So, they all warranted, you know, there's nothing dirty about them. They, they probably have more technology than the oil itself in itself, you know, right now. So, it's really, I don't think the noise or pollution or any of that nature is going to be, you know, as, as a problem. And then, if the truck breaks down, since they are warranted, you know, they're going to go to the dealerships, which specialize in these repairs. And as of a company ourselves, you know, we, we still going to be moving in. We're going to have to make, you know, we're going to have to hire some people, you know, from, from, I would assume, the village itself. We're going to have to use services. You know, our trucks, you know, do use a lot of fuel, so we might be able to collaborate with some of the gas stations that we had. And I noticed one just a little bit south of the property, where, again, you know, given the fuel prices, it kind of, you know, generate quite a good amount.
Any further questions for the petitioner from the board? Okay, I just want to say, I appreciate that. You all have been adapting to the concerns that were brought up of, from the residents who are in that residential area not far from you. Really appreciate that. That doesn't always happen. A lot of times, you know, you could have just said, "Bye-bye, we're done, we're, we're not going to do it." So, I do appreciate that you did that. Okay. Yeah, so, we, we have a recommendation from the Plan Commission that is on the agenda. We will take action on that. The second item, which is the ordinance, we have that as first reading, so we will not take action on that this evening. But I will, if there's no further discussion from members of the board, I will entertain a motion to accept the Plan Commission's recommendation. PCC 2022-004, Special Use for Outdoor Storage and Several Variations Rochester and Gusto Drive, Trans Lines, Inc.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Bowman, second by Guyer. Madam Clark, take the roll, please.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spelling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Great, thank you. As I said, the ordinance, we will not take action on that this evening. Will that be on next meeting?
Yes.
We will not have that on consent agenda. I would like to have Trustee Marisack back for that as well, so. Okay, moving on to items for discussion. We have Item A, Liquor License Request for Scally Plaza Bar and Tavern, or Tavern. Director App is taking that, or?
I can start with it, and then if someone wants to add anything. This is the property just south of the cemetery on Douglas Road, current vacant lot there. Petitioner is here tonight, so he can speak to you about what he would like to do there. And then, at the end of the night, usually, we give you three options. Are you ready to move forward with it? Do you want to say no right now, or would you like more information on it? So, that, if Sony wants to add anything before the petitioner comes up?
Um, yeah, just mentioning, they have submitted their application for a PUD to do a development there, so this is. Okay. So, as we're moving through that process, I requested that he get his request into you to begin that discussion as we begin to go through the public hearing process. So, we've got Mr. Daniels here, that can kind of walk you through what they're proposing and what they're looking for as far as a liquor license.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Daniel, D-A-N-I-E-L. I'm with Daniel Law Office in Oak Brook Terrace, Illinois. I'll provide a business card to the deputy clerk this evening. I represent the developer of what is proposed to be a two- or three-lot planned unit development south of St. John's Lutheran Cemetery. We're only talking about the south unit and the retail building component of the development. The reason for getting this before you at this stage primarily ties to financing and staging construction. And the decision here principally affects our financing and allows us to make a decision on building both Car Wash and the commercial building at the same time, so that we don't have one vacant lot while we're trying to lease it out. Essentially, we have the Car Wash spoken for as far as a tenant, and we also have a tavern operation that would like to have gaming. I think many of you are familiar with the Illinois Gaming Board Regulations and the legislation. I think many of you are familiar with the Illinois Gaming Board Regulations and the legislation. Our letter touches on some of that. In looking at the code, there were a couple of things that we saw when I was starting to address our opinion letter concerning zoning and licensing in Montgomery. And we didn't fit clearly within G. Under the circumstances, we're proposing a bar that has 14 stools and tables for seating of 12 people in addition to gaming machines with no kitchen. The other two units are going to likely be restaurant units, one with a drive-through, one without a drive-through. In correspondence, we've proposed two routes. One would be to amend your existing Class G to include bars or taverns as an alternative to restaurant operations. We've also added a Class T for tavern operations. And in doing that, what we did was look at what you have previously found in Montgomery as important. Is this simply going to be a gaming cafe? And that's something that your history here says, we really don't want that. We want something in addition to that. And I've spent a lot of time out here playing basketball at Rush Copley and other locations. And frankly, we've gone to have drinks after a number of basketball games. And there's not really a tavern located in Montgomery. There's a restaurant with the kitchen closed or something to that effect. But we are asking you at this point in time to provide some inclination so Ms. Julian and I can figure out how we might be able to amend this ordinance going forward. Now, there are a few things moving at the same time as this. Zoning is one. We would like to try to get under construction this fall. Again, we would prefer to build both units. The gaming regulations have given us that confidence where we can build the full development going forward, and our lenders will finance based upon the commitment from a tavern that will have gaming. But we also have the Army Corps of Engineers we're dealing with. So, hopefully, it's all going to fall into place. But if we have to wait till after it falls in place to pursue the ordinance discussion, we may miss the window for construction in the fall. I think that's the timetable that has us here at this point in time. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've represented the folks involved in this for years now in several communities. They're good people. Some of you may know Rick Scally is the builder of a development across the street and just to the south down Douglas Road. There was an extension with a commercial center there. He was, I believe, the general contractor on that one or one of the general contractors on that one. But he's the principal behind the tavern operation that we're discussing.
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
This is, I typically speak first when it concerns Douglas Road. So, a couple of things. I have a really hard time supporting it, and I want to be really clear with you so that you understand where I'm coming from. I think it has been by design that we do not have taverns in town. I'm quite comfortable with continuing that. That's the first part. The second part is we have had some folks that are longtime business owners, longtime investors in Douglas Road that have come before us, and they said they wanted to have something very similar where it's not that full restaurant. They want to have where someone can go get a drink and have gaming. And that was a tough decision, but I said no on that as well. I did not support that as well. That was tough because they've been here for years and years and years. The third part is that there are already so many liquor licenses along Douglas Road, granted, different types than what you're asking for. I always feel very protective of that area because it's just a little different than most areas of the village. We have a lot of foot traffic, and we get a lot of influx of foot traffic from the surrounding area. And again, I just, I am not inclined to want to have an additional liquor license there. I've been outvoted before, and my colleagues all know that I'm essentially a no when it comes to Douglas Road to adding anything further to it. I appreciate it, though. I think you were very thorough in your application. And part of, I served on the Douglas Road Task Force when it was in place a couple of years ago, and that was all about bringing in investment. And I understand this would be a significant investment into Douglas Road. But again, I'm hesitant to say, "Let's put in a tavern and let's have another liquor license." So, that's where I'm coming from. I have consistently said no to these. So, again, it's nothing against this development. It's just that location and another liquor license is a no-go for me. I'll open it up for the other trustees to talk.
If I may?
Of course.
On that front, I would think that it would be difficult to proceed with a commercial center and not count on a middle unit at a minimum with a liquor license. I think, you know, if you're not looking at a tavern, you've got a retail center there. And this is, this property was part of an annexation agreement over 20 years ago. And it has sat undeveloped even though retail at other locations has developed. And what we are doing is taking a vacant parcel that is impacted in part by a localized wetland and drainage issues that we're dealing with. It may have been unattractive for that, but it's also at the end of this strip that you discussed the pedestrian traffic and what have you. So, you cross our property and it's, you get to our property, it's either for the Car Wash or the retail center, and then you have St. John's Lutheran Cemetery. So, I would submit it's worth considering that additional liquor license. And I would certainly have to have a discussion with my client about the perception that no liquor license would be made available at this location because we're about to publish legal notice on the matter, and they may pull out entirely.
Well, I'm only one vote. And like I said, I have been outvoted for that particular area. I just wanted to let you know where I'm coming from, so.
And that's why I've mentioned it, because if we don't hear from other folks, there's going to be that discussion tomorrow morning, first thing. One of them's watching at least at the moment. And I think the other investor on the Car Wash side is also watching tonight, so.
I'm not a hard no on a potential liquor license for Douglas Road. However, Douglas Road needs a lot of things. Tavern with gaming and no food or restaurant option is not one of them.
I agree with Tom. If it was a restaurant that wanted to serve alcohol with a meal, I wouldn't have a problem. But as far as a straight tavern, I've lived in town many years, and I remember when we had three bars within walking distance in this area. And, you know, typically a tavern or a bar is for someone to go in and just drink. And unfortunately, they usually just drink until they're drunk. And then something happens, and then we have the police involved. And years ago, before, we had a large police force. We would actually tone out the local fire department, request the Beef Squad, which were the biggest guys on the fire department that would come in and help the police department control the fight at the bar. I know years ago, the village adopted the policy that no more taverns or bars once they closed and they were done, we weren't going to reestablish liquor license form because it just appears to be problematic when you have a business where the primary draw to the business is just to come in and drink. But again, I'm with Tom. If it was a restaurant, like some restaurants we have in that area that wanted to serve food and then have a component for if somebody wanted, you know, a beer or wine or something like that with their meal, I don't think I would have an issue with that. But a straight-out tavern, I would have an issue.
We did request a special use for a tavern, so that may be one of the issues that has to be discussed tomorrow morning. We were unaware that the intent was to winnow out the taverns and not have any more. It was still listed as a special use in the zoning ordinance, so we were pursuing that.
That's 50% food, is that what, that's our benchmark, is 50% of the sales of the business?
Right, no, we understand that. I think the dilemma for smaller businesses in unproven areas is that you can lose a cook and your kitchen's closed. And that's happened in town at least twice that I've counted. It's happened in towns that I've represented owners when they have to work on that transition between having a cook and then having to work so hard to find one as they don't have a kitchen open, but they have a restaurant liquor license. That can be a very difficult time in today's economy, and you've got that going on, on and off in Montgomery, just like everyone else does. It's not easy to find people to work.
Right. Typically, I think most of our restaurants in town are smaller, family-owned. And I've actually, in several of them, I've seen the owners back cooking because they don't have a cook or a cook didn't come in, so.
Trustee Bowman, any thoughts?
No, I would like to, first of all, say thank you to your clients for looking at the location, looking at Montgomery and the work and effort that's going to go into that property to develop it. It's a lot, it's a big investment to go in there. Me personally, it's not the Barwill Tavern, call it a bar, is what it is. But I walk into a gas station and there's gaming machines all over the place. I just don't feel the need that Montgomery needs another gaming option. We get so saturated with gaming machines everywhere we go. We're not Las Vegas. And we had this conversation once before with the gaming, and maybe in a different location, it would have been acceptable. And that did happen where the gaming ended up over on Route 30, 34 in that area. So, a focus of a tavern and a gaming operation in that location, I would be a no as well. But with sincere appreciation for the thought of developing that area.
Apparently, it doesn't matter what I think anymore because I'm the last one. So, I mean, I could say yes, it wouldn't matter. But I kind of feel the same way that Tom does and Matt, where if you get me a food component to that all day long, because I think that's one of the things that's kind of missing in Montgomery, is get me a sit-down food place. I don't care if it's got a bar in it, that's fine. Because my wife and I, we just went to Oak Street in North Aurora for four or five hours with a bunch of our friends and had food and those sorts of things. Get me a place where I can do that here, and it would be fantastic. But yeah, get me a food component, and all day I'll say yes. Great, well, I do appreciate the time tonight. I think what we would pursue is a saturation review. I mean, over time, we've seen the gaming revenues in Montgomery from year to year, and we understand that when one's added, you're not taking away from other folks, and it can be a draw on an additional revenue stream. But I think it sounds like we need to give that something extra and keep it focused on a restaurant and not a tavern. And we're not going to ask you to look at a gaming cafe simply. So, thank you for your time.
I hope that the feedback was helpful for you. Again, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. The next item for discussion is affirmation of Montgomery Police 10 Shared Principles. Chief Smith, please.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the board for the proclamation and recognizing this week for our peace officers. Your cooperation is truly appreciated that you give us. Also, I'd like to make sure everybody here is invited to the three events that are happening this week for Police Week. Number one is tomorrow night at Mooseheart. It is our Kane County Memorial Celebration. That is 6:30 at Mooseheart. On Wednesday, at 11:00 a.m. in Kendall County, is our police memorial event at the Kendall County Courthouse. And then on Sunday, the 15th, right here at our favorite confection coffee house at tree, we are having a coffee with a cop. And everybody, of course, is invited to those. Also, in honor of Police Week, I'm going to ask that this board publicly affirm what we call the 10 Shared Principles that were in your packet. In March 22nd of 2018, the Illinois NAACP and the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police adopted these principles. Subsequently, the police department in August of 2018 also adopted them. The problem we found out just last week at our conference was that sadly, only 298 out of 877 police agencies in the state of Illinois have adopted these policies. Now, these policies, for a little background, started being developed when we had a little civil unrest in a place called Ferguson, Missouri. Our towns were divided, people within our towns were divided. So, leaders from the NAACP, the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, communities of all color and all other leaders got together and developed these principles. These become somewhat of a movement across our state to bring people together, especially building trust in our police departments and our communities. I would have to say that this affirmation that I'm asking for with these 10 shared principles represents what we believe is correct for the community. Therefore, I would ask that we publicly affirm these principles. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate that.
So, if you're not taking official action, you can, we can take a consensus that, you know, the board supports these principles?
Okay. So, is everyone in favor of this? Is there anyone opposed to this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, the five of us here say, "Yes, we affirm it publicly." And was that exactly what you needed, I hope?
Thank you.
Is this something we can put it on a consent agenda or put it on when Matt and Doug are back?
I mean, we can if you want. We, like I said, the police department has already adopted these principles and have been working with them, so.
Throw it on consent.
Throw it on consent.
I had asked that, too. Okay. Moving on to the next portion of the meeting, new or unfinished business?
I have something new. So, on April 30th, we had our Arbor Day celebration. It was a cold, windy, wet day, and we had about 40 people show up. And it went really well. Ed and Aaron had everything set up really nice. Trustee Marisack was there also. And most of the members of the Beuvification Committee were there. And we had a celebration. We actually planted the tree. Everybody participated. And at the end, we gave out the free French trees. And it was a very nice time. Hopefully, we can do it again next year, and the weather will be a little bit nicer. But typically, when we have Arbor Day celebrations, it's wet, cold, rainy. It's just the way it is, so.
Absolutely. Great. Trustee Bowman, anything? Trustee Youngerman? Trustee Betzinger, anything? I have two items. So, I'm going to ask Christina regarding our shredding event. Details on that, please, May 21st? 9:00 a.m. till 12:00 at the police department on May 21st. Thank you. And the other item I wanted to mention is that the Rotary Club of Montgomery is sponsoring a cleanup, a neighborhood cleanup in Seasons Ridge on June 5th. That is a Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00. Everyone is welcome to help out. Anything else? Okay, no executive session. Our future meeting schedule? Are we voting if there's a cancellation? Okay, we're not voting on that. Let's see, with no further business to attend to, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Bowman. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please. Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yep.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Is it too late for me to say something, folks?
The meeting's over now.
The meeting's over, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.